I'd like to bring to order the March 12th meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Perry.
President.
Councilor Shabbat.
President.
Councilor Ryan.
President.
Councilor DiMederos.
Present.
Councilor Edwards.
Present.
Councilor LeBeau.
Here.
Councilor Hilton is absent. Business brought before the council consent agenda received in minutes from the following boards and commissions: the Tiverton Conservation Commission, the Tiverton Prevention Coalition, the Planning Board Economic Development Commission, and the Cemetery Commission Annual Report for 2017. Correspondence received and filed: City Newport invitation to participate in the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, March 17, 2018. Charter Review Commission: Request for appointment of independent legal representation. Approval of tax assessor abatement. Susan Gill Administrative Officer Reports of Activities for February 2018. February overtime reports for Police Department, Fire Department, and DPW. Town Administrator Monthly Department Reports for February. Planning Board Permission to Advertise for Public Hearing to amend zoning Article 11, Section 10 Affordable Housing Letter of Recommendations. Planning Board Permission to Re-advertise for Public Hearing to amend zoning ordinance Article 2, Article 5, Article 6, Adding Definition for accessory structure and alter the dimensional regulations applicable thereto with Planning Board Recommendation. Any of the councilors like to take anything off the consent agenda?
Madam President.
A-7.
CA-3A and B.
CA-3A and B. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, taking 3A, B, 3A, and Town Administration, 7. So moved to a second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? CA-7.
Is Bill Anderson here?
He said probably getting the trucks ready.
Yeah.
You should be getting the trucks ready.
Yeah, so, okay.
Ready to go.
Alright, so the next to the last page on the CA-7, so number 2. I don't know if we needed to pull it, but I just wanted to draw it to people's attention. You said that the, based on expected cost for construction of the, is this the, yeah, the roundabout, as provided by Gilbain and Carty, the 1.8 million is not going to cover the cost of the project?
That's correct.
Okay, so you need to understand the next steps. What, according to my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we, the Town of Tiverton, has a agreement with DOT that it would be 1.8 million, and we have a town agreement with Twin Rivers that if it goes over 1.8, Twin Rivers should be paying.
Which is what I figured. I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of that.
And I just wanted to make sure everybody else was aware of it, so that it was all, it was out there, and people know that it's not. So that was, that was all, okay? Anything else?
No, that was a condition of the agreement that the town entered into with both Twin River and our IDOT. Any overages would be paid by the Twin River Company.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve CA-7.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Alright.
Unanimous. CA-3A and B.
Alright. So, for the St. Patrick's Day Parade, that's obviously coming up. I'm gonna make a plea to the remainder of, the rest of the council, not myself, because I will be in attendance and I will be marching, that hopefully someone will come with me, because it was a lot of fun last year. I know our police and our fire were there representing, and I think it'd be great to have a showing from other members of the council. I'm looking at you, Councilor Shabbat.
I'll be there.
You're going? Alright.
Me too. Can I use a segue?
Listen, if you can get it down there, you can, you can use it. That's not an issue.
I can only walk a quarter of a mile.
So, so anyway, so that's that. As for 3A, or CA-3B, I just want to make a quick comment, and I'm gonna direct this comment to anybody who's watching, because I have got no idea what is going on with the Charter Review Commission, and quite frankly, this is embarrassing. They are sending us requests for the town to spend money on a legal, a secondary legal council, for an organization that is a committee that is charged with a task per the charter that half of those members wrote. And I am shocked and appalled that we have two members on the committee who are actually lawyers that didn't catch this, and they think that this is acceptable. And it's, and it is unacceptable. So, that's, I just want to make sure that everybody at home is aware of this too, because this is just, it is mind-boggling what's going on with that committee. And with that, I'll make a motion to-
Wait a minute.
Oh, sorry.
I have talked to Tony about this, and we have no obligation to give him a separate legal representation. Tony, if you want to add to this, Attorney DeSisto represents the town. There's a lot of rumor and allegations that he is not representing them. That is absolutely not true. And as far as I know, there's no legal obligation of this council to do this.
No, there isn't, and the thing is, is that, and I'm concerned too, because the town solicitor under the charter is the attorney for the town, and is charged with giving advice to all of the boards and commissions in the town, including the town council, including the Charter Commission too. And when I give opinions, sometimes those opinions aren't what the boards want to hear. It's happened with just about every board in this town, and every town that I've represented for boards and commissions. And I think that's one of the issues that there are here. But it's not that you have a solicitor that just represents the town council. It's a corporate, of course, Tiverton is a municipal corporation. Each board and commission is instrumentality of that, and I give the best advice that I possibly can. So, that's my only comment on this thing, and that's following the language that's in the charter.
I'd like to say one more thing. There's allegations that I am telling Attorney DeSisto not to answer them, or to give them legal advice. I think Tony will agree that the few times I've called him concerning the Charter Review Commission, I've asked him to answer Rob Coulter, because he called me with concerns that he called Tony and hadn't heard from him. So, I have never, and I want to make that perfectly clear, have told Attorney DeSisto not to answer them or cooperate with them. And I think you'll agree with me, Tony?
That's correct. As a matter of fact, he told me to hurry up and get them the opinions, so. And not, not that politely either.
I have not talked to Tony about the Charter Commission unless Rob Coulter has called me with concerns. And I've, I've talked to Tony and asked him to reply to them. So, any allegations that I'm trying to stop them from doing anything is totally untrue.
Madam President, just, just one more thing, and I want to add this for the record, that as a member of this council, I am deeply concerned with what's going on. But as a resident and a taxpayer, I am furious with what they are doing. And I think that we need to take a deeper look into what they are actually doing at that committee, and whether or not it fits within the confines of their work as specified by the charter. Because it sounds to me, based on this letter that they sent to us, that they are going completely and totally off the rails, and it's something that we need to look at. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve CA-3A and B.
Second.
Just discussion. I have talked to Tony about where we go from here with the Charter Commission's recommendations. I'm planning on holding a public hearing sometime in May or June. Keep in mind that as of July 17th, maybe, they are no longer a commission, because it, per charter, it, it's only a year. So, I'm trying to schedule a public hearing sometime at the end of May, so that we can meet with them in June, have a public hearing, and go from there.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just comments. I don't know that they're, in their letter, they say there's conflict of interest, and I don't see where, where that is occurring. They should document that conflict of interest. If they, they have any inkling that there is conflict, they should document it. And then they go on to say anticipated litigation, and I don't understand where they would anticipate any type of litigation from that commission. They're, they're there to do a job, they're there to present a report to the town council, and follow the process. So, I, I'm totally baffled by this, by this letter from the commission. Thank you.
What I understand, the litigation is they don't agree with the end product, and who's to decide what goes on the ballot. And I think that's where they're having a problem.
They, as a board, do not have that ability.
Right, but they've asked Tony his opinion. Tony gave his opinion. As Tony said, sometimes they don't agree with his opinion, and I think that's where the litigation is going. I have a motion in a second.
I think they need, I think we need like 10 or 12 pacifiers.
Alright, I'm gonna move forward.
One more thing, and I, just a question for the solicitor. In our role as the council, right, we have the ability to do investigations and to pull people in and all that stuff. I think we, as a council, might want to consider doing something along those lines, to figure out exactly what they are doing.
My opinion is that we need to move forward, as we should as a council. We need to follow the steps per charter, and then if we hit any resistance along the way, then maybe investigate, investigation will be warranted. But right now, we are doing nothing wrong. We're waiting for their recommendations.
I'm not saying that we are doing something. I'm saying that they might be doing something wrong.
Right, so I don't understand where the litigation is coming from, because we really haven't done any action on this item until we hear their recommendations. So, without any further discussion, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Open forum, Tiverton Conservation Commission presentation, a very grave environmental crisis in Tiverton, underground storage tank. I understand that's tabled, Nancy?
Yes, he's asked to continue it. One of the members would not be able to attend. I'm not sure it would make next meeting, because it's a very busy meeting, so it may be the first meeting in April.
So, I, I'd like a, a motion to continue this?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Thank you. Public hearing. Public hearing for zoning amendment, Article New, solar photovoltaic system development continues from February 12th meeting. Updated recommendation of Planning Board. Is Stu here?
There he is.
Come on, Stu. It'll be easier this week, I promise. There's no coming. I'm trying to get this going.
Madam President, in the interest of, of time, and to save us from a lengthy process here, Mr. Hardy, out of curiosity, because you know I put something forward to vote on, how is the recommendation that you put forward different from what the state put forward? If you could just focus on that, I think I would be satisfied.
It, it's pretty much all in the cover letter that, that you've received. We, we took about half of their recommendations, and we voted on every single recommendation in turn, so we must have had, Susan, 10 votes or so, for every little thing, including the minor items. We, we, the, the, the big area where we disagreed with the, with the state, and Chris Kearns of the Office of Energy Resources was with us, sitting here at the hot, in the hot seat, engaging in a full discussion, and he left a happy camper. As a matter of fact, I talked to him two days ago, and he's looking forward to the outcome of this, of this hearing. The, the big area was in the area of, of surety, and making developers of, major developers responsible for putting up a surety. And we, we discussed it, and we decided that we would sort of do a compromise, rather than, rather than set a specific percentage of 110 percent as sort of the base. We decided to say up to 110 percent. And that was actually a suggestion of our legal counsel, Peter Squares. And Chris Kearns was good with that. And the other thing we did in that area is we, we took out the, we, we put Dave Robert in the seat of deciding how much, sort of our local, our local expert authority on how much the surety should be, because he has that information and the engineers do not, so.
So, one, one quick question as it relates to that. So, this is going to directly address the items that we were concerned about with the farms and that sort of thing?
Abs-
Satisfies that?
Absolutely. And, and it also picks up some of the things that the town council kicked around that we thought were good ideas. We reviewed all of those things, and, you know, John, you would suggest, you know, deleting National Grid and putting in the local electric distribution company. We did that. Chris Kearns thought that was a good idea. Tricia Hilton wanted to remove a provision in the definition for both moderate size and large size, primary use, to make it clear that it didn't have to be the primary use. We kicked that around and had a long discussion, and, and we decided that we would get rid of primary use for moderate, so that you could have, for a moderate size, which is 16,000 square feet up to 40,000 square feet, that wouldn't be an issue. You could have both, both the, you know, both the solar system and another use going on, like a farm use at the same time. With large systems, it was agreed by the board that we should not do that, that we should retain that language. And Susan is here to explain it, because it was, it was, it was her, it was her idea, but basically-
Stu.
The board felt that it would, it would give the board a little more authority to, because it goes through the major development plan process, and we can waive that, but it gives us the right to at least consider, okay, what's going on here. Did I say that right, Susan, or would you like to?
I think she agrees, kind of.
Stu, I, I have a question about the surety. So, so if somebody's spending just $1,000 on a system, they gotta put surety $1,000?
No, no.
Just, just-
Roof mounted, there's no, no surety.
No, I mean, I'm talking about the big projects. So, they gotta basically come up with the cash to put the system in. That's-
Well, I, I, do you mind if I answer? And I have to say that the, the board really addressed all of the legal concerns. That's the first thing. But what they came up with for the surety was that it can only be in a maximum amount of 110 percent, but it gives some flexibility for the town to ratchet back the surety amount. It doesn't have to be 110 percent. It just can't exceed that. So, the town has flexibility to adjust the surety down from where that is, depending upon the circumstance. I believe I'm correct on that.
Yes, yes, exactly, exactly.
Who determines the circumstance?
The assessor. The, the tax assessor.
But how about the person's ability to pay, pay that surety or get that surety? Because somebody might not have whatever. These systems are $200,000. If they gotta put up $220,000 in surety, and then $200,000 to put the system in before they get their surety back, there's a lot of paperwork going back and forth. So, I'm just concerned-
Costs, costs are, are a factor to be considered.
And so, I just have one, one other thing to add. I just spotted a typo. Actually, my cover letter came in before Peter Squares had finished the edits on the, on the, on the actual ordinance language. And so, when I, when I spotted the ordinance language, I noticed that one thing that we had discussed at our last public hearing, which by the way, wasn't the 12th, it was the 26th of February, was the changing the name of a technical document called MSDS to an SDS, because the new name under the, under the, under the new protocols is Safety Data Sheet.
Yeah, just as a reflection of the actual thing.
So, and, so, so Peter caught everything, but he, so that little gremlin slipped in, but there's always going to be a gremlin slipping in someplace. So, so if you do make a motion, you need to include that in your motion, that that needs to be cleaned up.
At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing. Anything from the public? Wait a minute, I think-
Go ahead.
Come on.
No, I, I, and I'm sorry I'm late to the process. I was one, I didn't have the most recent document. But when I was going over it today, I was, still had some concerns about the district use regulations, which is on page 2. And I understand that a medium solar energy system is involved, is allowed in an R-30 zone, and a large solar energy system is allowed in an R-40 zone. And I realize that it says you have to have three acres, but I just question whether in fact we're making a somewhat of a carve-out for an industrial area in the middle of a residential zone. And that's my big question. You know, because who knows who's gonna knock down what and put it where. But I just had some questions about basically putting an industrial use in the middle of a residential zone. And maybe that's been answered, and maybe somebody had-
Yeah, we did. We talked extensively about that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't under, I didn't know that, but I had some concerns about that, because it is an industrial use.
That's exactly the same question.
Okay, thank you.
What was the, could you just refer?
She had the exact same question that-
No, no, no. What was the resolution? That was my question.
Oh, but it, so the resolution was, is basically that there are really only a couple spots where this would actually apply in those zones. And in reality, in order to cobble together enough land to do it essentially in North Tiverton, would be cost prohibitive, because you'd have to, you know, knock down a bunch of buildings. It would be, it would be a lot of effort for not a lot of return.
Right.
So, I'm just wondering if it would be a safeguard to, instead of making it a permitted use with asterisks, you made it a special use.
Which is basically the-
Sort of what we did, yeah.
Same thing.
Okay, but I'm just, you know, in light of what sometimes happens, I just thought the stricter thing of special use might be more protective of the people that are living in the area, and that's what my concern was.
Stu, would you like to explain that a little bit?
Well, if, in addition to the three-acre limit, in other words, an owner would have to have at least three acres, and that limits it. In North Tiverton, there are like three parcels, you know, that, that would fit.
That could exist.
But we wouldn't want to make, say, the Hicks Farm ineligible. It's got 100 acres, for heaven's sakes. And we have also extended the setback. The setback on, on everything else is 50 feet from, from the, from the property line. For this, it would be 60 feet, and then there would be a, a buffer included in that 60 feet. So, it wouldn't be in the face of the neighbors, and it wouldn't be in the face of motorists going up and down streets and so on. We're, we're, I think we're being, being, being fairly reasonable here, and we, we just didn't want to prohibit it. And keep in mind that this, that medium-sized systems go through our Article 20 Development Plan Review, and the big systems go through major land development review. So, the Planning Board has a lot of control over it if there are problems, and the neighbors would come forward and, you know, we could do other things.
Thank you.
I hope I can answer that.
No, that's fine. I just wasn't kind.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Any other comments from the public? I'll close the public hearing. Any comments from the council?
Madam President?
Councilor Edwards.
I'm gonna, if I can make a motion on this, I'd like to. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve the, you know, solar photovoltaic system developments as amended by the Planning Board's updated recommendations, with the note that we need to, per their recommendation, delete the word "material" from Section 4H and I, and delete the M in front of MSDS on those same sections.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the council? All those in favor? Sixth.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Stu. Town Council sitting as a board of licensing, Heather Zoller Z Truck LLC, 56 Kingswood Road, Bristol, Rhode Island, DBA Z Food Truck, request for peddler's license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is Mrs. Zoller here?
Madam President?
This is a license that's current right now, correct, Nancy? The Z Truck.
No, it's not current.
Oh, it's new?
It's out there, yep. I don't know if they've done it in the past.
I think they have.
By giving the-
Alright, Councilor Edwards.
Alright, so, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the peddler's license for Heather C. Zoller Z Truck LLC, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Sorry, Madam President.
Yeah?
You're correct. This is a license they have. It's going to, this actual license will expire on May 1st, so could you just amend it to say May 1st of 2019?
Would love to, would love to make that amendment.
I've ate from this Z Truck at Grinnell Beach before, I think. Okay. Amendment to the motion?
Yeah, I accept the amendment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Thank you. John Skrupiak, 48 Island U Drive, Bristol, request for private detective license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Madam President?
Councilor Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve John Skrupiak, private detective license, subject to meeting all requirements. Is the timeframe acceptable on this one?
Yes.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Kathy Feiniger. I don't know if I said that name-
Feiniger?
Feiniger. 34 West Look Lane, Westport, benefit fundraiser for West Place, and don't forget us Pet U.S. Animal Sanctuaries. Request for special event and Class F liquor license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is Kathy here?
Madam President?
Do we have?
Go ahead, John.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special event and Class F liquor license for Kathy Feiniger, benefit fundraiser for West Place, and don't forget us Pet U.S. Animal Sanctuaries, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. D-1 interim town administrator approval ratification of a three-year contract, including impact statement for police chief. Nancy?
Counselors, the contract put forth has an impact statement on it. It is pretty complete. There will be a memorandum of understanding on this, because if you agree with the contract, we will be appointing our chief. He's currently in the union, the police union pension, and it has been agreed, I did agree with him, that we would hold his benefits frozen at this time. So, there is a memorandum of agreement that I'll prepare and have him sign as well.
Madam President?
Councilor Edwards?
I'd like to approve the three-year, make a motion to approve the three-year contract for the police chief.
Second.
Okay, excuse me, I'm sorry. Is the motion subject to the completion of a background check?
Subject to completion of a background check.
And secondly-
And the signature on the memorandum of agreement, correct?
That's correct. And also, in page 1, paragraph 1, first line, elimination of the word "extension."
Sure, and elimination of the word "extension."
And the chief can't do his own background.
No.
No, there's one being done-
I'm only kidding.
Currently, but it could take a few more days, so the appointment won't be effective till then.
So, that the motion is with all those amendments?
Right.
Correct.
Still second.
There isn't a, is there a, I don't know why I'm confused about this. Is there a probationary? We decided not to do a probationary?
Yeah, there is.
We did six months.
Six months.
Where is it?
Room 1.
I really apologize. I gotta, I'm sorry, I missed it.
I believe we prorated it too from the time he's been acting chief.
Right, I was with Nancy and the, the person doing this, and I thought that should be in there. I apologize for missing it. Okay, I have a motion.
The person has reviewed this as well, so.
I have a motion in a second. Do I have any further discussion?
Yeah, I just questioned the, the salary. I didn't, I didn't-
I based the salary on the fact that I didn't think it was appropriate for him to be making less than he currently was making. And he does give up some benefits by not being in the police union, such as he was giving up five days of vacation. He's giving up the idea that the sick time can roll over with a payout at the end, and now he will lose his sick time at the end of his term of employment. He won't be getting any payout for the sick time. He will for the frozen time that he has at this point. That's in the memorandum. And there were a few other things that he is obviously, and there was one other thing on this that we, you know, some, I will review it all through better before he signs it, but on this, I have incentive pay for $2,500. That's the same incentive pay that the prior police chief was receiving. However, we now require that- However, we now require that our police chiefs have a master's degree. So I would also like that that $2,500 become part of the base salary. It's only fair to do it. Why would we pay for an incentive when we require him to have that incentive?
Essentially gonna be part of his.
Yes, that would make it pensionable as well, but, but I think it's a fair thing to do. But, but that was where I came from, the salary. I know the, um, some intent of different counselors was to keep it as low, but, but he's not gaining on this.
Yeah, we discussed something previous with the other town administrator, six months and an increase rather than starting off, that's all.
We did, and there'll still be that increase in the three months there if you, if you read through there. There still is an increase, but it would still be less than we paid the prior.
Bottom line is, you did a good job negotiating.
Yes, absolutely.
And don't forget to add his four months as acting chief. No, not his first money for his, his retro.
We're gonna talk about it in a minute. We're just talking about the contract now.
No, but it's in the contract.
Oh, all right, all right.
That's part of the contract that we retroed him back so he doesn't have to do the whole-
I apologize, yes.
That's what we said?
No.
Well, it must have been somebody who-
It was if there was a year probation. He only has a six-month probation.
Be good.
All right, so, um, I have a motion.
Yep.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Interim town administrator, appointment of police chief.
Thank you, chief.
Nancy?
I'd like to appoint Acting Chief Patrick Jones as our next police chief.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
It's my honor to serve you. Thank you.
Just to let everyone know, Chief Jones, as we will call him from this point on, have talked about we will be having a ceremony for him sometime in the near future where we will give him an oath, and hopefully his family will be here to pin him. Stay tuned, it'll probably be within the next couple of weeks. Council President Dean Mederos, approval of ratification of town administrator, three-year contract, including impact statement.
Madam President.
Just as a background, Councilor Bo and I met with the candidate, with Nancy with us. We went through this. Everyone's in agreement. It took place last week. I can explain anything you'd like.
I'd like to make a motion to approve/ratify the town administrator three-year contract. Second.
Can you change, under term? Cross-off extension contract?
Yep, same thing.
Same thing.
Okay. I thought I'd get that in before you did.
Turning off the front of that word for some reason.
The candidate on this has not fully reviewed, although we had discussed everything, but he hasn't fully reviewed the contract. It wasn't sent to him, so he will have a chance to-
I can assure him it's everything that we agreed to. But of course, before he signs it, I expect him to read it. Do I have a second?
You did.
I've got a second perfect. Excuse me. Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Council President Dean Mederos.
Welcome to Tiverton.
Not yet.
Appointment of town administrator. I'd like at this time to make a motion to appoint Jan Reisman as our new town administrator.
Second.
Any further discussion?
That provided background check or whatever?
No, that's all done. All the background check and everything's been done. Jan, why don't you come forward?
I should have brought him a shirt.
I'm gonna have him actually join us. Motion, motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations.
I'll get you your official T-shirt.
Jan, if you'd like to join us or say anything, that's fine. Would you like to join us?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you. Jan will be starting, his first day will be Friday. To let the council know, I am off on Friday, and Nancy and I will be here to brief him on the important topics that we have going, and we all know this a lot. So I'll probably be here all day with Jan.
At least it's after the snowstorm.
Well, if it was tomorrow, we would delay him. And Jan will also be joining us in executive because I felt it was important for him to listen to what's going on.
Madam President, one comment. You have a tall order sitting next to the two of us over here.
Financial business. Interim town administrator, request transfer of $9,685 from account 10207152. Town council advertising ordinance update from comp plan to account 10206954. Town council advertising and ordinance.
I've mentioned this before to council. Our advertising account is 2,000 plus in the red. I don't anticipate using the comp plan advertising or using very little of it this year since we still haven't finalized the comp plan or any changes in ordinances that would need to come into compliance. So I'm asking that you transfer it into the advertising. For next year's budget, I did increase that line item $2,000.
Madam President.
Council Edwards.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of $9,685, which is the balance from account 10207152. Town council advertising ordinance slash update from comp plan to account 10206954. Town council advertising slash ordinances. Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Distribution to council's final proposed budget, FY 2018, 7/1, 2018, 6/30, 2019. Nancy?
I just wanted to distribute this to the council. This has been submitted to the Budget Committee as your final proposal and recommendations. Also, the revenue that we had approved on that Saturday. There was no major change, just the calculation one that I had discussed with Mr. Edwards on the last Saturday. So I just wanted to distribute to you, so you have it.
There was a question from Mr. Katz on why we didn't include the revenue of the casino in here. But like we explained, the casino date of opening is probably in October, but we can't really, unless it opens, we can't really count on that revenue. And what my understanding is, the revenue will be quarterly, so it wouldn't be until sometime in the middle of next winter. Of course, that's my understanding, but at some point, we do have to talk to the casino regarding when the revenue will come in, or the state, really.
Madam President, question on that. You explained to Mr. Katz that a budget does not include revenue, correct?
Well, he would, no. We gave him the revenue.
Oh, okay. So you're talking about the revenue, okay.
You have to give budget.
Yeah, no, we gave him that.
And I think we made the right decision because we, we don't know when the casino really is gonna open. I mean, I know they want it to be open in October, but if that doesn't happen, then we've accounted for revenue we're not gonna get. So I did explain it, but while I was explaining it, I was thinking we really do have it, have to get a better understanding of when that revenue will come in.
And where the revenue's going. Nobody says it's going into the general fund.
Absolutely. We haven't decided that, and that may be decided at the next election or whatever we all decide.
I already did.
Madam President?
Yes.
Actually, interim town administrator, does this include the updated school expense number?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just for a point of interest, on Thursday, there will be a representative coming to explain the police pension. If anyone's interested, there will be a representative to explain it all to the Budget Committee.
Is that from Washington Trust?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions? We don't need a vote on this.
Just one more thing. Maybe, I'll, I'll plan to attend on that one because I know last year when they came, Mr. Katz had a significant number of concerns and didn't really seem to grasp it, and that's the industry I'm in. So I'll make sure to be there to help him out with that.
I will also be there, but thank you for coming along. Acting police chief, oh, not acting police chief, Police Chief Jones, request permission to advertise to establish an eligibility list for the position of police officer. As I understand, this is just an eligibility, eligibility list, and this isn't to hire anyone.
Good evening, that's correct. This is not to hire anyone. As you know, the police academy runs twice a year. The next police academy session is in July of 2018. We're gonna miss that because we do not have an active list. So all I'm asking is to establish a list, which normally takes about 90 days, which is gonna put us past the academy deadlines. So in the anticipation of any open positions in the future, prior to your, with your approval, the next possible date that we could get someone into the police academy is January 2019. So my request tonight is to, just to simply establish a list. Madam President.
Council Edwards.
I'd like to make a motion to grant permission to, to Chief Jones to advertise to establish an eligibility list for the position of police officer.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
Madam President.
Yes.
Chief, how big of a list do you plan on making? Because as you know, we're gonna, the list that you get are gonna be applied everywhere in this state.
I hope to attract as many possible applicants as I can.
Perfect. Good answer.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
We're unanimous. We are doing a unanimous vote all the way.
I think everybody wants to go home.
We're trying to lure you in, Jan. Don't get used to this.
Yeah, don't get used to this, Jan, at all. Councilor LeBeau, discussion on draft- No, I'm sorry. Acting town administrator, permission to advertise for building code enforcement.
I've included the advertisement from the last time we went out to advertise. I can run it by the solicitor. I haven't done that yet, but I will. I wanted to make sure that was basically how you wanted the ad to go out. I have spoken to the, Mr. Jack Layden of the State Building Officials Office. I spoke to him last, a couple of times, but last week as well, and he wanted me to contact him tomorrow morning. He's trying to get someone to be able to fill in for us as he's done in the past. He also made a comment, Jan, I thought you would be interested in. He said if we were on e-permitting, they would be doing plan reviews and inspections with no charge. So I told him to send down somebody that's prepared to get us up and going on e-permitting then.
Beautiful.
But I know it's been discussed a few times, but right now, e-permitting can only be for the building official and the fire department, I think it is, because Bob and Neil have talked about this in the past. I know the tax assessor, Mr. Robert, has reservations on this. His department's not gonna mail into this information real comfortably. And the Tax Assessors Association has some concern with it. But the state is pushing this, and he seemed to say if we would do that, it could easily, easier get us someone.
Chief White?
Before I jump on it, I think I should just ask the solicitor. I don't wanna get too far off topic, but on the same venue, we had a meeting before about the e-permitting. We have a grant that's waiting for us to be able to jump in to buy the equipment and get into it. I'm all in favor, my marshal's in favor of it. Yes, Mr. Roberts did say that there was a little bit of a, a concern on his end, but the assessors were working with that. It's a data transfer to bring the permitting over to them.
They just need the APIs or whatever.
But for us, it's, we really need to go to it. I would highly recommend it.
Madam President. Just a quick thing. Would, and I noticed our new town administrator looking at this. Would it be worthwhile having the new administrator review this? Okay, so in that case, I'd like to make a motion to allow the acting town administrator permission to advertise for building slash code enforcement pending review by our town solicitor and our new town administrator.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Six. Councilor Bo, discussion on draft ordinance regarding casino gaming, revenues, and possible vote to advertise ordinance for public hearing. Councilor Bo?
Okay, so I've been working with Joe Arman up at Lincoln and trying to, using his model in Tiverton Networks. Fantastic up in Lincoln. I've been working with the town admin, yeah, the town administrator, and we came up with one small portion of this because we kinda crossed the lines a little bit, what's going on. For what we have here, the writing that Tony did for us is to cover only excess money. After the $3 million, to put 15% of it away for future shortfalls when the casino fails. So that'll protect the town after 2030. That's 15% of the amount of money that comes in. So if they do whatever, $4 million, they'd put $150,000 away for future use. The rest of the ordinance that I'd like to write is to keep all the money out of the charter. So I'm gonna need a couple more weeks, I mean, out of the, out of the general fund. So I'm gonna be working with now the new town administrator. I forgot his name. I'll call him Jan. Jan. So we, now that he's on board, between Joe Arman, our attorney, and the new town administrator, we can get this worked out in a fashion that would, when the folks from town see where the money, how it's actually gonna really save you taxes instead of giving pennies back to the people that need it and tons back to the people that don't, which is what will happen if they, the way the charter commission wrote, giving 65% back with checks or whatever kinda nonsense that was going on there. So we're just gonna look to permanently lower taxes with that money. So that all said, I would like to continue this for probably a month. Cause we have-
First meeting in April.
Yeah, for the first week in April because Jan was working with me on it. He's been traveling a little bit, and now we can get Jan.
Slightly.
Yeah. We can get Jan, Tony, and I got one more meeting with Joe Arman to get all his paperwork, which he agreed, so that Tiverton can be in a great position from day one instead of where they were back then.
I suggest that Jan go with you to meet with.
Yep, that'd work.
Madam President.
Yes.
I have a problem with this. Partly, I, I understand that we wanna move this forward, but, and I do too. But I remember we talked about this months ago, and it was, let's really talk about this, discuss this, and not have one or two people work with one or two people. and not have one or two people work with one or two people. Tiverton is very different from Lincoln, and I looked over this proposal. The subcommittee brought up a lot of different issues that are not even on here. And I don't want to go into discussion on it, because it's going to be too detailed, and I know people want to get out of here. But I just want to say a couple of things that are not here, that are not missing, that have been brought up in the subcommittee. And I think, if anything, before you go and do all that, I think you need to have, I would suggest a workshop for the town council.
Basically, that's, that's what's on here now, is I want every-
I don't mean, I mean a workshop, not like a half an hour thing.
I want everybody's input. This is just to, just to get it started. We just needed to get the ball rolling.
I, no, we already had the ball rolling with this.
No, we kicked the can down the road.
Okay, excuse me. I have a flaw. We started with the subcommittee, we had a lot of stuff going on there. I applaud you for bringing it up again, but we did not kick the can down the road, as far as I'm concerned. The subcommittee was definitely told that they could not vote on certain things. And I just want to mention some of the things that should be brought up, and really need discussion, and I'm just going to say it without going into detail. So, and it's not on this. So, a couple of, I also have been talking to people in town. That's the other reason, that's the other reason I'm saying this. We want to know what the priorities are in town, and it's not on here. I've talked to people, the priorities that I've gotten, and that are not here are infrastructure. You've got some of that. But debt reduction, that's not in here. We need, I think that we need to talk to, with the town treasurer. These are, again, these are discussions we brought up a few months ago. We also, some of the priorities was debt reduction, capital equipment, the town reserve fund, because it's only at a threshold of 3%, which everybody seems to agree is very low. That's, that's got to go up. We talked about economic development, because that's what this town needs, and I'm not talking about these big things, projects. I'm talking about all kinds of things. Everything should be on the table. There's nothing in here about how we would decide priorities, who would decide the list, what would be the needs assessment, and last, but not least, nothing about voter approval at an annual FTR.
But, everything, hold on a minute, John. Everything you said is what I want, is what, why we're sitting here. Everything you say is not on here. That's what I said. This was just the extra revenue.
I know, but what you also said is that you want to speak with the town administrator and with John, and you want to come up with certain things.
Yep.
And I'm saying that, I don't think that's, I think it should be the town, town council who discusses things in the workshop, all of these things, which we started with the subcommittee. I would like to continue it.
Madam President?
Because otherwise, it's just one, one last thing. Otherwise, it's, it's people reacting to your response, and I would like to have a bigger, open discussion.
But everything you just said is what the plan is.
The way I look at this, is this is a template. This has not been brought up yet. Randy brought it up, is, this is a template to work from. I understand what you're saying, Christine. I don't think Randy, for a second, thought that this would be the final project, that there would be input from all of us. And you did bring up a good, a good point, though. Instead of putting this at a regular meeting, why don't we do a workshop on an off week, so that this would be the only topic, people can come just for that topic, and everyone bring their own ideas, because I think we all have different ideas. But this is a template to start the discussion, and then we'll move from there.
Not to start the discussion, the start, the discussion started months ago.
To continue the discussion.
Thank you. That's important, because I don't want you to just dismiss that, all the work that has been done in the past.
No, 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 no. And you know I don't.
I know that you don't, I know some people do.
All right. So, this is what I, this is what I think. The best way to do this is, we'll schedule this, maybe the off week between the two meetings in April. Joan, do you have a date?
April 16.
April 16? How's that, Randy?
That's perfect. I just got done writing a check for the IRS.
All right. And we'll, yeah, it's the day after tax day.
Oh, no, it is tax day.
It is tax day, because April 15 is on a Sunday. It's my daughter's birthday, I should know that.
I thought tax day was the 17th.
No, the 15th.
For some reason.
It's a, it is a holiday.
All right. So, let's not talk about tax day anymore.
Massachusetts, if anybody is-
Patriots.
Because I would like, I would like the treasurer, does the treasurer live here?
Yes, the treasurer lives here.
Okay. Because I would like, I would like the treasurer to be here, if at all possible.
Sure.
Tax assessor?
Sure.
Okay. And, okay, and so, just one other clarif, is a clarification. Tony, I don't know if you looked at this, but I think in paragraph, paragraphs three and paragraph four, when-
Madam President, could we just, I know, like, we have a lot of stuff coming up, I mean, I would love to dive into this, but-
I don't want to dive into it, I want to make a table.
Yeah, but I don't want, yes, but I mean, can we just save all that for the public hearing?
Well, you need to know that, if you're going to look at it. On number, on the paragraph three and paragraph four, where it says Section 292, it should be Section 291.
That's correct, yes. That's typographical error.
So, just so you can understand it, John, that's all, and anybody else. Okay.
All right. So, we will make a date for April 15, and-
April 16.
April 16. And I encourage the councils, if they have any other ideas, input, or any of the community would like to join us with any input, it would be welcomed.
Madam President, one more question on that, for the clerk. Would it be possible to recirculate, prior to the meeting, the final output from the committee that Councilor Ryan worked on?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure we have all that backup too, if there's anything, yeah.
Yeah, the other thing is, the other backup would be useful, and I've got it too, if you don't have it, is the stuff that the previous administrator had done, about the change, the different modeling, and I think, I think he did it with Dave Roberts, with the treasurer, and what also the Dave Roberts brought up at last week's budget meeting, would also work.
And Nancy, could you extend an invitation to the people that were on the, on the committee, the original committee, because they may want to come and participate, or at least be here to listen? Is that a good idea?
Yeah, no, that's a great idea.
I need to get the right backup, if you want.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilor LeBeau and Councilor Ryan, and I'm sure, I'm sure we'll all work together to get something that we all agree on.
I doubt it.
Well, we can try.
We will, we will. We'll just keep working on it, that's all.
Interim administrator, permission to advertise for summer recreation, lifeguards, gatekeepers, and summer program amendments to fee resolution, various departments. Nancy?
That's just two of the items that need advertising. The summer recreation program, I'm going to have to proceed and put that advertising out. As far as the amendments to the fee resolution, I'm going to speak with Mr. Reitzma. Well, I have it, and I'll be doing the advertising, but I want him to contact his departments and see what other departments need to be addressed. I know the planning board has asked for some, and the recreation department has asked for some. Clerk's office may have a few, but I'll work with Mr. Reitzma on it.
Madam President?
Councilor Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the interim town administrator and then the new town administrator permission to advertise for both the summer recreation programs and amendments to fee resolutions.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
I have an issue with opening in Grinnell's Beach this summer, so we should, I don't believe it's a good idea to open the beach with the bridge construction going on.
No, I think this is just for Fodlin, is this correct?
Just for-
Just to hire the gatekeepers and the lifeguards, it's up to the Recreation Commission what they're doing.
But, we won't have to hire so many, because I was talking to, what's that guy's name? Bill. Bill, about the beach, Grinnell's. He doesn't think it's a good idea either to open it up because of the construction. If some little kid wanders over and they drop a boulder on him, we're in trouble.
But you need more at Fodlin than you had in the past, because we're getting more people up.
We talked about that at some, at some point. I think it was at the budget meeting.
Budget meeting.
And it, it looks very, it does not look promising that-
Right.
Grinnell's will be open, there's just too much that's going to be going on.
All right, I missed that meeting, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay. So, probably Grinnell's will not be open. All right, so I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
On the fee resolution-
It's not to advertise.
It's, I know it says various departments, but are you sending it out to all the departments to make sure everything is updated?
What would generally happen is, the administrator would send out a notice to all his departments to see, for them to review their fees, and to see if any need any kind of amendments or adjustments. Once I find out all the departments that, then I will put out the advertisement, and I will put on it, including clerk's office licensing, beach fees, whatever. It'll have a better description. And it only has to be advertised 10 days before the public hearing, so.
Do we normally approve these for advertisements without having the advertisement?
Well, that's what I was thinking.
The fee resolution, you do, it's just to go out and amend the fee resolution, because it's, it could say just, said in the past, just various departments. It doesn't have to specifically say the beach fee from $5 to $10. It can say various departments, licenses, and fees.
Yeah, but this is, this will come back to us with the change.
Yeah.
Is that what you're doing here, Joan?
Oh, yeah, you're going to get, you know, the whole spreadsheet that's going to have proposed changes.
Yeah, that's what Joan, I think that's what Joan, because I didn't understand that either.
But that's not part of the advertising.
So, this is just, you're really just telling them-
Put the ad that there's going to be a public hearing on the fees, various, the fees.
All right. Motion's been made in second.
That won't happen till April.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Police Chief Jones requests permission to advertise to accept bids for the purchase of police vehicle.
Good evening again. Based on the budget presentations that we had made, and the cut of the capital improvements for the police cars, what I'm requesting from the council tonight is permission just to advertise based on current bid specs for a patrol vehicle that suits our needs. As you're aware, the vehicle maintenance account, and I know that would probably be the likely area that we'd look to take some money to-
Just to purchase it, yes.
That is correct, which is what we discussed in the budget process, but this would be the first step.
Madam President?
Yes, Joan.
I'd like to make a motion to grant Chief Jones permission to advertise to accept bids for the purchase of a police vehicle.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Chief Lloyd, requesting permission to purchase Scott Air bottles, previously approved from lowest bidder Shipman's Fire Equipment of Waterford, Connecticut, at $882.70, which is lower than we thought, right, per unit? And this is to buy how many?
That will give us, according to them, we could come up with 39 bottles. But originally, the motion was as a sole source. They have added another distributor in this area, so I could not go sole source. So, I'm coming back to ask for reaffirmation that on, based upon the only two distributors in this area that can supply us.
Tony, are you listening?
I am, as a matter of fact. I haven't had a chance to discuss this.
It didn't look like you were, that's why I asked.
Well, you'd be surprised. I didn't get a chance to discuss this particularly with the chief, but I did discuss with him. What's happening is, is it's coming from the same source. There's two dealers.
Okay.
What he managed to do was get the same product-
From the same-
From a different dealer. So, I consider that to be sole source, but it is appropriate for the council to vote on that. That's what we were discussing about the Scott bottles.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, I just want to make sure that everything, legally, we're good, that went out.
All right, so this is 39 bottles.
I'm sorry, sir?
You finagled one of them.
No, sir, I asked them directly what their price was, so, $60 apiece difference.
So, this is 39 we're purchasing now, so we should be looking pretty good by-
Put us in much better shape, yes.
Okay. All right, any, go ahead.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to grant Chief Lloyd permission to purchase the Scott Air bottles, as previously approved, from the lowest bidder, which is Shipman's Fire Equipment of Waterford, Connecticut, at $882.70 per unit, which is 39 bottles.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, chief.
Town administrator announcements. Nancy?
I have an announcement here. Sam Shuford is with Church Community, and he sent an email today, so I just wanted you to know that he had a first public hearing in November regarding some funds that could be used just for housing, and he just sent me an email this afternoon that he wants to schedule the second public hearing for April 9. So, I'm just letting you know that will be on. And then, secondly, I want to welcome our new administrator as well, and let him know that I've tried to hold the fort while you were gone, so.
Nancy texted me the other day that she's taking a month off once, once we do this at this meeting, so.
I tried to do what I promised I would do, and it's coming to an end, and that's okay with me.
And I would like to thank Nancy. I don't think people realize the endless amount of work. She's been here seven days a week. She'll call me, just this Sunday, she called me, and she was here doing work. She's just been really doing two jobs very well, and we'd like to thank her, and we've been really tired, so.
That's fine.
Council announcements?
Madam President?
Yes.
Just one announcement, I'm going to steal your thunder.
Go ahead.
Slightly. I just want to congratulate all the people who won at the Lions Club Dinner. We had several Teachers of the Year. We had Detective Martin, who won Policeman of the Year, and we had two of the Chiefs Men from the Fire Department that also won. They were co-firefighters of the year, which was great, so congratulations to all the winners of Lions Club Awards.
Which was Brian Thompson and Donald Clark from the Fire Department. Congratulations.
So, you shared the thunder.
We shared the thunder. Thanks, Council Perry.
Anyone else?
One more. I expect Councilor Shabbett and Councilor LeBeau to walk with me on Saturday.
And I might do it, too.
Come on, everybody's going to come. We're going to have a showing.
I just have one, one thing. Hopefully, in the future, that the Lions Club will notify the clerk to let us know when they're having this ceremony, because we didn't find out about it until Saturday at 4:00, because I'm sure, I know I would have went, and I'm sure-